Twenty twenty-four, meeting of the Nelson County School Board to order.
He's looking forward to the end of this.
I know.
First item on the agenda, if I can pull up the agenda. I got it, I got it, I got it. Is, we're going to say the Pledge of Allegiance, and I understand we might have a volunteer to say the Pledge of Allegiance? Oh, well, thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. So I'll need a motion to approve unless there are any changes or, I'm sorry.
Or do we have any changes?
I don't believe we do.
All right, then I move that we approve the agenda as it is.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next we have recognitions, we have the High Five Award with.
So it is the summer, so with that sometimes getting people here is a little difficult. So we do have the High Five Award. Fortunately, I think the recipient was not able to make it this evening. But Ashley Bryant, school counselor at Ty River Elementary, is our High Five Award recipient. Ms. Bryant is extremely thoughtful and respectful as she helps students navigate situations that can be emotionally, socially, behaviorally challenging. In addition to ensuring that she meets the eighty-twenty percent rule, Ms. Bryant is extremely flexible and readily available to help all students at Ty River Elementary School be successfully navigating their school day. This may include a quick check-in, an in-depth discussion, or an affirmation. She is there to help students succeed. Ms. Bryant is truly an asset to TRES and Nelson County Public Schools. So I'm calling Ms. Bryant on June thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, as the High Five Award School Counselor winner. So congratulations to Ms. Bryant.
All right. Now we have the One Nelson Awards with Dr. Hester.
Yes. So in recognition of the accomplishments of the class of twenty twenty-four, I am recognizing the entire class of twenty twenty-four as the student recipients for the One Nelson Award. The Nelson County School Board and Administration would like to recognize and honor the NCTS class of twenty twenty-four as our student One Nelson winner for June twenty twenty-four. As the class of twenty-four started their high school careers, the students faced adversity early on. They had to navigate through synchronous and asynchronous instruction and take SOL tests on all third-day days. This group of students learned to overcome all obstacles placed in front of them to be successful. This group of students were truly a family. They supported each other academically, athletically, enduring school activities and programs. So congratulations to the entire class of twenty twenty-four who graduated on May seventeenth, which was a fun activity and to be able to be there and witness. So congratulations. I know Mr. Walker helped us with this and just having that feeling. So when we say that they started in an interesting way, you know, coming through the pandemic when you start your high school career in fluctuating aspects, it makes it difficult to really get your legs under you, but they did a great job in coming together and doing that. So congratulations to the class of twenty twenty-four. Our next recipient, who was also not able to be here this evening, is Ms. Julie Morris. And she is receiving this award on behalf of our classified staff. Julie Morris is deserving of the One Nelson Award in recognition of her outstanding contributions to Nelson County Public Schools. She should be particularly commended for her invaluable support to our instruction program. During her short time in central office position, Julie has consistently gone above and beyond in her role, demonstrating a remarkable ability to streamline processes, enhance efficiency, and provide indispensable support to her colleagues. Julie's impact extends beyond the confines of her job description. She is a true team player, always willing to lend a helping hand, share her knowledge, and collaborate with others to achieve common goals. Her positive attitude, strong work ethic, and passion for her work serves as a source of inspiration to those around her, motivating them to strive for excellence in everything that they do. One of Julie's most impressive qualities is her ability to adapt to new challenges and circumstances with grace and resilience. In the face of unprecedented obstacles, such as recent audits in all federal programs, Julie has remained steadfast in her commitment to supporting our programs. We are incredibly fortunate to have her as a member of our team. So congratulations to Julie. Okay, yes. Yeah. All right, so I will ask that Sheriff Mark Embry and all other deputies who would like to accompany him up here so we can acknowledge you for a One Nelson Award. So I will read this, but I do want to acknowledge, because we do have some people watching. We have Sheriff Mark Embry, we have SRO Chairman of Health and Templeton, and SRO Keith Brown. So thank you, wait, is that SRO or? Try to get it right. So, all right, so the Nelson County Sheriff's Office has been supportive of NCTS in providing security for after-school events and traffic assistance at school release time during the school year, making it safer and more efficient for bus drivers and car drivers to exit NCTS campuses. They were also willing to familiarize themselves with our facilities by practicing active shooter drills at one of our elementary schools. Most recently, several members of the sheriff's office have provided assistance with traffic at our graduation ceremony. We appreciate your partnership with our SROs and their assistance with our safety. So congratulations to our community members in winning the One Nelson Award. So congratulations, thank you very much.
Dr. Hester, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. All right, cool, thank you, gentlemen. Oh, wait, I've got one thing to wait. Here's your mom.
Thank you.
Here's your mom. And here you go. Thank you so much, thank you, Douglas, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Yes, congratulations.
Thank you for the award, thank you all. Thank you.
All right, and last but not least, on the heels of the High Five Award, we wanted to recognize our staff member from the certified group, Ashley Bryant, to accompany with the High Five. Ashley Bryant has a special way about her that the kids know they can trust. She's the face and heart of TRES, very strong, selfless individual who shows up for kids, staff members, outside events, and is always greeting those with the brightest smile. She's always went above and beyond to help make transitions a lot easier, and we just wouldn't have made it if it weren't for her. So congratulations to Ashley Bryant. Unfortunately, she was not able to make it, but congratulations nonetheless. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. So now I'm supposed to put the disclaimer on the next step, that if you were here visiting for the award, you're more than, more than welcome to stay. But if you feel the need to leave, that's okay too. A lot of people don't want to stay for the next portion of the meeting, and that's okay. But I think everybody's pretty much gone. So, next item on the agenda is comments from board members. Mr. Perkins.
Just great job on graduation, well done. It was a wonderful ceremony, and you all pivoted and handled it inside very, very well, so well done. Congratulations to the award winners, and I think we'll hear hopefully at some point later today about a CTE award for our high school ag and horticulture department. So congratulations, that was quite an honor. And thank you all for a good year. You guys really persevered and did a great job. Thank you, guys.
Ms. Turner.
Just thank you all for a really good year. We got through it. I will say that there were some bumps in the road, but I'm glad to see at the end of the road that everything worked out. So thank you for all of what you do.
I don't have any comments either today. Thank you.
Thank you. So congratulations to all of the High Five and One Nelson Award winners, and thank you to all the staff, whether they're classified or not, support staff, everybody, bus drivers, everybody doing such a great job this year. I think it was a very successful school year. I know it wasn't without issues, because they never are, but I think we are at least coming back to something that looks somewhat normal from what we used to have. So, and this recently out of the pandemic, I think that's, that's probably all we can ask for at this point. So thank you all for everything that you've done. And I just want to speak a little bit about the budget while I've got a second. So, and I'll try not to make this super long, but board supervisors met, and we'll talk about this a little later. They were able to give us six hundred and ten thousand dollars over last year. But we are going to have to make some tough decisions tonight because the state decided that they didn't want to give the whole harmless money in the budget that they normally do. And that has created a deficit for us of one point two million dollars. So we have to figure out where that's going to come from in order to balance our budget. And something that, not to get too far in the weeds, but people need to understand, the local composite index is what drives the money that we get from the state. That is derived, I talked about this last meeting, that is derived in large part, not completely, but in large part from the value of our real estate and the tax rate. So the state says the county has this much money, and it's up to them what they do with it. Now, we have other things in play that the county needs to do with the money or feels like they need to do with the money. And I get that, we're not the only game in town, as it were, but we are the biggest game in town. And I would argue that in a lot of ways, we are the most important game in town because the work that our people do in the school system sets the tone for these kids' lives going forward. And every study that's ever been done shows that a better educated populace is more productive, less prone to use drugs, less prone to be involved in crime, and in less need of services. And so it's not really spending, it's an investment. The board of supervisors has made their decision on what they're willing to invest in right now, and we can't do anything about that other than deal with it. I have had talks with the chair of the board of supervisors and am very hopeful that beginning in, in August or at the latest in the fall, that he and I will be able to meet and be able to hammer out a calendar of joint meetings and individual meetings to where we can work on what we're going to do next year and how maybe they can increase their funding at their level going into next year so we won't have this problem again. What we're looking for with the board of supervisors is a willing partner that understands the investment in these kids. And we are doing everything we can to try to foster that relationship and try to meet them at every turn where they are in order to do that. So I just wanted to be able to say that. You know, like I said, the decisions we make tonight are not made lightly, and they are, they are tough decisions. But we don't print the money, we don't fund the school system, the board of supervisors does. So we've been given our answer, and we've got to get to work. All right. Next item, important dates. So I'll let, Dr. Hester, you want to take that?
So summer learning, particularly before the elementary and middle school started this week.
We had some summer learning taking place for the high school.
Spring last week.
Went by there today, a lot of cool activities that have a lot of overarching themes through every content area that they're doing, and also cross-curricular emphasis on writing. So it's really cool to see the excitement. I spoke a little bit with Susan Cargill, who's really kind of been one of the lead components behind, kind of developing this, like an architect behind it, and, and never seen someone so passionate and excited to talk about worms. So part of the projects that they're doing is making the connections to local indigenous people, particularly from this area, but how do they farm, and what's more successful, and how do they do it? And the composting aspects behind the worms, and how does that help? So I'm super excited about that, the kids, the kids were really, were really into it and in learning and that hands-on experience for learning component, that was really cool. So that was really great to see. We have Juneteenth coming up next Wednesday, that will be a division holiday. Also, there's some events coming up in the community that we promoted on our social media in order to, to support Juneteenth and community events. We also have the Fourth of July holiday coming up on the Fourth. We also have Stars and Spurs, which may highlight some of our students, some of our staff, and it's a community event. But we've spent a lot of effort bringing the community into our buildings, but this is our opportunity to go out into our community and be a part of it and give back and a, and an opportunity to have a lot of fun and a great way to spend three days. July ninth through the eleventh, I'm going to go attend the AASA Legislative Conference. I was, will be the Region Five Legislative Representative for Region Five. So hopefully that will give us some opportunities to come face-to-face and have some conversations with legislators, individuals, not, you know, maybe perhaps nationally, AASA is national, but also on the state level. So we can get them to understand the impacts of decisions made at the state level to places like Nelson County and not just Richmond or Henrico or Chesterfield or Fairfax that sometimes drive a lot of the decision-making. So we're really, I'm looking forward to that opportunity. And so that's what's coming up in June and through part of July.
Now we are down to item five, comments from the public. Do we have anybody that has signed up to speak?
No, did you, was that part of your comments too?
I think I'm four, so I will just extend the date conversation. I too would just echo appreciation, the hard work on behalf of Mr. Walker and his group, but also all the departments that contributed to putting on a great graduation in addition to the community that came out and helped us. So great, great all-around effort in demonstrating that One Nelson mentality. Mr. Yarzivinsky was able to accompany two of our teachers from the CTE department to Richmond to be able to celebrate their nomination for, for being winners of Region Five. But come to find out, while they were, they're being recognized for creating excellence in the CTE program, they were recognized as state winners as well. So congratulations to Margaret Cole and, or Margaret Cole, yep. Margaret Seaman and Cole Ramsey for their work and their efforts. I'll just read this to you because I can, and it highlights this award. Nelson County High School Agriculture Education Program includes production agriculture and horticulture. Focusing on Virginia's agriculture industry, the Production Agriculture Program covers the global scope of agriculture, scientific research concepts, and plant, animal, and food science, principles of leadership, agriculture skills and safety and power, structural and technical systems, natural resource and environmental systems. Incorporating science, technology, art, and principles of design, the Horticulture Program focuses on the cultivation, propagation, processing, and marketing of ornamental plants, flowers, turf, vegetables, fruits, and nuts. Students participate in work-based learning activities through supervised agricultural experience or SAE projects, and many program completers continue their education and join the workforce in areas related to agriculture. Students participate in the Nelson Senior FFA Chapter, which currently boasts one hundred percent FFA members, and active participation in FFA activities at the local, state, and national level. So wanted to recognize our, our folks in the Agriculture Department of CTE, but all of our programs. And what a wonderful opportunity to go down to Richmond and, and be recognized, not only for our region, which is in and of itself great, but for the state. So congratulations with Dr. Yarzivinsky. I know he indicated earlier today it's a team effort, but our teachers and our staff really put a whole lot of effort into, to bringing our programs to excellence, so I appreciate that. We were able to hold our administrative retreat, which is where we take our school-based and division-based leaders and really focus on the things that are going to drive us forward. Primarily based off of our data, whether it's quantitative or qualitative. And so it was really a great three days to be able to spend together and really focus on the things that we want to use to drive us forward. And it was, it was a really great time. So that then helps the rest of the summer where we're planning and preparing for, for building next year for the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five school year. And as Mr. Chief stated, we were at the board of supervisors meeting this week and advocated on behalf of the schools in highlighting there are decisions to be made. We, we asked for the consideration of additional funds, and they stayed committed to what was posted at the public hearing. So we will be moving forward with having to make some tough decisions, but there are things that we need to do, and, and we'll go ahead and do that, and I think was previously stated. Regardless, our kids are coming in August eighth. So we're going to be ready, we're going to be ready to go and be as prepared as we can possibly be.
Thank you, my apologies for skipping you. So now we are at item five, comments from the public. Do we have anyone signed up? Okay. So hearing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. We have the meeting minutes, second reading, April eleventh, twenty twenty-four, for the regular school board meeting, the meeting minutes, second reading, April eighteenth, twenty twenty-four, joint meeting for the school board and board of supervisors, the registers for May twenty twenty-four, and the monthly financial report for May twenty twenty-four. Are there any discussion or questions about those? If not, I'll need a motion to approve the consent agenda as a whole. Have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Now we're down to items for information. First one is the meeting minutes, first reading, regular school board meeting, May ninth, twenty twenty-four, which you all will have. Item B, VSBA, May twenty twenty-four, policy updates, first reading. Dr. Hester.
So primarily for the, sorry, I lost my, lost my place. Primarily for the May meeting minutes, a lot of it is grammatical, some updates and things of that nature. Tammy, what was the, what was the, the one?
Part of the Virginia Literacy.
Yeah, the Virginia Literacy Act. So we've been talking about the last few, several school board meetings about Virginia Literacy Act and the impact on things that will be mandated for us to do. So now you'll see them becoming inserted into policies. So what isn't grammatical or changes in that in syntax, it is focused on VLA or the Virginia Literacy Act. Later on today, we hope to have approval of our proposed literacy plan, textbook adoption, all of that falls under the Literacy Act, along with several professional learning opportunities that we'll have.
Any questions? All right. Item C, updated information on the capital improvement plan. Ms. Shannon Irvin and Mr. Les Campbell.
So the auditorium light project is underway, and they're finishing up hopefully either today or tomorrow.
Significantly brighter.
Yes, so LED lighting.
That's awesome.
And state-of-the-art system, so it should be well addition to the fine arts program. There's been no change in the delivery schedule for HVAC equipment for the fall. Hot water tank replacement is scheduled to start on June the twenty-fourth and tentatively scheduled to wrap up on July the twentieth. But there will be no hot water at the high school, middle school campus during that period of time. There will be cold water, but not hot water. So I need to make sure that everyone understands that. The HVAC air compressors will be installed during that project as well. They have already installed the two HVAC mini splits, and then the four GM AC units are scheduled for the fall. We're working with Joel Loving to come in to do the pre-construction hazard material inspection and then the HARA inspection for the summer, and that would be for the high school. Get that done. As a board, you need to make a decision tonight on the scope for the outside work that was presented by the Timmons Group for Phase Two. I think we'll talk about that a little later. For CIP issue at the end of the year, as we're closing out the books, we do have a problem with the walk-in refrigerator unit at Rockfish. We repaired the freezer portion about a year ago, and now the refrigerator portion has gone out. So we do have one price, and we're trying to get two more prices for a competitive quote. The price that we got was twenty-three thousand, two fifty-two eighties. So we're going to be looking to make that, because that's crucial to the operation of the school. We need to get it in this summer. And the last item is that we do have a bid on the street for an RFP for solar at the high school. So we'd be looking at either a purchase price arrangement or a solar array that we would own, depending on what would be the most advantageous to the division. So those are due on June the twenty-fourth at two PM, so stay tuned.
One question, Shannon. You said there's no hot water starting, was it June twenty-fourth? Is that when they're having the Excel Academy? What will, what will they do during that period?
I know that Les has been in communication with them, so I'm assuming that they have that worked out.
Okay, because we'll have students there, they're serving breakfast and lunch.
Yeah, and like, yeah, they, they've kind of been communicating with each other about what's taking place. So I will circle back with, with Mr. Campbell and Ms. Douglas about what the alternate plans for that are.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. Next we have the Division Literacy Plan with Dr. Hester.
Yes. So as has been, I'm not going to, I'm struggling walking already. I guess I will walk over there. So the Division Literacy Plan has been presented to you in, in great detail. And so as you have had access and time to process and think through it, one of the, the kind of steps included in this is, this will be an item of action later on, is the approval of textbooks that was presented at the last school board meeting. We have the two options. We've had extensive work done by committees to be able to review and go through them. So I appreciate the effort of everyone doing that. It's not an easy task to do that. As you well know, textbook manufacturers don't necessarily reside in Virginia specifically, they're nationwide. But anytime you do adoptions, that will be then included in the literacy plan, you take a bit of those considerations. And then you have further committees processing and identifying lessons, certain small pull-out groups of materials that we feel like we can supplement in a better fashion. That has taken place all along, it's always taken place, nothing will change in terms of that. We continue to do that, and that promotes our familiarity with the materials and the resources that we select. But it also allows us to stay up to date and relevant and meaningful with the resources that we select for our students. So what we ask for today is, we are further pushing our Division Literacy Plan to be accepted later on in, in this meeting. I'm not going to read back through all the information that was presented to you prior to, but I would say a great deal of time and effort has been pushed, placed in developing this and had been going on prior to the installation of the Virginia Literacy Act. In fact, we've been identified as someone who we were on the forefront of doing this. And so while a great amount of work was done, whether through internal audits or external audits, I really want to thank everyone who, who worked on this and developed it because over the course of this year, there's a lot, there are few regional meetings where they would bring in training to help support this development. And, you know, because of the work that had been done on our behalf prior to, we really had a solid plan that will stay relevant for our students and our staff for years to come, and not just a fix right now, but to see, meeting our students where they're at right now, but then also having the foresight to see where we need to take them in the future and where they will be. So I appreciate all of that work. Any questions?
All right. Yeah, don't run off.
Running away.
Now we have Policy BCF and Policy DGD, that's amazingly hard to say, with Dr. Hester.
Those were two policies that were presented in previous meetings.
Those were two policies that were presented in previous meetings. And I think we kind of had intervals of approving them. And so now we're at the second reading, or the third reading, if you will, of these. And I wanted to reach back out to you as a board to see if you had any questions or wants to keep them, remove them, and see if there's anything that you would like to do more with this.
So I have a question. DGD, all of the text is stricken, right? So does that mean we're removing it totally?
That's not a practice that we.
It's not something that we actively.
Okay, so we're going to remove it. Okay.
Removing it from the policies, yeah.
Any other questions? All right.
I did want to jump back real quick. This is, this happened recently. And I wanted to kind of let you know about this and our ongoing commitment to literacy. Literacy and math coming out of the pandemic were two specific areas that took a great deal of impact of not having face-to-face interactions or just the disruption of learning in general. Even if, when we were face-to-face, the overall life in general was disrupted. And so with our ongoing commitment to promoting literacy, we were really working hard to get a grant to kind of continue this effort of developing. And so Virginia Department of Education approved Ty River Elementary received an elementary school literacy implementation support grant in the amount of $50,000. And so that will go a lot towards professional development and structures and things of that. So it's just one more layer of things that we're doing to try to promote literacy. And I know Ms. Coughlin has been working on that. I think you may have just recently attended.
I attended a symposium at Longwood and then we will be going to a drink in Arizona in the next few weeks.
Which is important. Yeah, it's a national opportunity to study all the, you know, science of reading and all the things and how to get it together. And how do we teach our teachers and how do we reach our students? And so I think it goes without saying that the efforts that we're putting into doing this and supporting this are great. You know, it's $50,000 that more that gets factored into our per pupil, but I think that's $50,000 well worth factoring into our children because the literacy foundation then supports all the other content areas. So that will be important.
Well, thank you. Any questions? I appreciate you pointing out the per pupil because I think it's important that we highlight that, that every time we receive a grant, no matter how many thousands or millions it might be, then we, that it goes in the per pupil cost.
Yes. Whether we expect it or not, you know, particularly with our ESAR funds, which will come to an end September 30th of 2024, so.
Is the HVAC delivery, is that going to cause a problem with those? No? Okay, good. Very good. Okay. Any questions anyway? All right. VSBA policy, no, that's wrong. I skipped that. And I had just looked at it. Sorry.
Just reminding you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Second reading of the student wellness policy, JHCF with Dr. Hester.
Yep. So in our last meeting, we had discussed the work that the Wellness Committee had done on developing a policy. Prior to, the main focus of the Wellness Committee was on nutrition, but we're looking to broaden it to also include more of the social, emotional, and mental aspects, but also things that go into that like fundraising. So that was a part of something that we wanted to make sure that we updated and aligned, not only with federal standards, state standards, but also just modern-day standards of what it takes to be able to do some things in our school. So we presented the initial reading the last time, so we're coming through on the second time to be able to see if you had any questions and hopefully get this approved and move forward. We're pretty excited. We've had several meetings of those making up the committee and looking to expand it and bringing in more. We were able to have parents be a part of it. Actually, oh, there you moved on me. We had one of our members here be able to serve on that and really looking to expand to see how we can support our students more and quite frankly, everyone in a little bit stronger of a manner, so. I know you, I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Any questions?
Sure thing.
All right. VSBA Policy Services Agreement for 2024-2025 and VSBA Membership Dues for 2024-2025 with Dr. Hester.
Yes. So as you are very familiar with, VSBA offers a multitude of services and opportunities to be able to support not only school boards, but also leadership. And this is to renew and continue with particularly the policy aspect that we take great advantage of through the VSBA and being able to continue that partnership and how we utilize them. So just looking to renew that membership.
Any questions or comments about that?
I actually just came back from a law conference, oh gosh, May 31st, which was full of a lot of great information and things that are on the cusp of, you know, we already know AI is a big deal, but like, how is that moving forward? And how is that going to impact things? And very interesting when you hear the lawyers in the room, but also when you hear, because what we hear a lot is, oh, you can't use this and you don't use that in the case of this. But like, to be able to harness such a resource like this, and I always joked, using it for good and not for evil, what a tool and a resource this is for the adults as well, not just students, but being able to use this in a way that is building skills and building for better use and not just accomplishing a checklist of getting something done. So it's, I really enjoyed that conference and it was one day, but it was a lot of good information. And so those are also types of services that are offered throughout the year. There's law conference, there's capital conference, hot topic conference, all those types of things.
I think we have a responsibility as school board members to participate in some of those as well.
Well, yeah, and yes, overall, and being a part of the VSBA agreement is to, and reflect back, oh gosh, was it September? When you, when we give out the pins for the participation in different levels and things of that nature. We actually had Ms. Turner Giles win the award for school board member for the whole state a few years ago, a year ago, something like that? So that was, that was exciting.
Advocate for education.
Advocate, yes, yes. That was great.
You get some nicks.
I know, I was like, it was just last year, but it felt like it was a lot. I was sitting there staring at you like. I just remember, I remember it was a surprise.
Okay. Any questions, comments? All right, that'll be an item for action. This next thing's also going to be an item for action, federal grant applications, 2024-2025 with Ms. Shannon.
Oh, do I miss Sandra McKenzie? I'd like to talk about federal grants for next year. We complete the applications based on the funding levels that we received this year, anticipating that they will stay the same next year. When we do get the new awards, we'll make a budget amendment to bring them into alignment. So the three entitlement, or four entitlement grant you'd like to talk about is Title I, II, III, and IV, aptly named. Title I is used primarily for our primary at-risk readers. We aim to employ or to pay partial salaries of an administrative salary at 25%, 33% for an administrative assistant, 80% for an instructional coach, a three-reading specialist, and a reading interventionist. So most of our dollars in our Title I grant are tied into personnel salaries and benefits. There's also funds set aside for site licenses for software for students to use interactively, for our homeless students to have Wi-Fi at home to be able to use software. We have transportation for our homeless students. We have transportation for what we now call our book box. We used to have a book bus, but the bus broke down. So we've had to take that out of service and we have bought a trailer and we're putting bookcases in the trailer and are going to haul that from site to site in lieu of having a bus. Book box, that's kind of catchy too. We're going to make it special.
Making chickens out.
That's right. Monies for family engagement to bring those parents on board early on in their child's career so that they can be advocates and help them have a good firm foundation starting out. There's also some instructional materials and some monies for parent engagement to have activities to bring them into the school. For Title II is designed primarily to help teachers in the delivery of their instruction. So we're changing the focus from previously having class size reduction teachers to having a part-time math coach at the high school, middle school, so be working with our secondary math personnel. We have a high turnover of math teachers. We have 50% of our math department will be brand-new next year at the high school and I think 25% at the middle school. So we have a lot of new folks. Our staff has done historically pretty well in math, but we want that to continue, so we want to be able to sustain that. We also have an inordinate amount of teachers still working on their collegiate professional license to be able to teach. And so we would like to devote $19,000 to assist them with tuition to be able to get their license because coursework is expensive. And we used to have a tuition reimbursement policy, but that was a subject of a budget cut probably four years ago or so. So we would like to redirect some money out of Title II to be able to pay for those to at least get their initial license. And then we have some funds in there for materials and supplies for the math coach to be able to do their job. So that grant was for $73,875.18. Title III is directed funding for ALL populations. So we have $3,500 set aside for tutors to be able to work with their students and then $1,244.14 set aside for translation services so that we could communicate with the homes to be able to inform them of what's going on, to have interaction between the home and the school. We also have $1,077.02 set aside for materials and supplies. So the grant is for $6,021.16 and requires the same amount of paperwork as the $352,000 grant.
Where the grant right was when you did it, right?
That's right. And our final grant is for Title IV. And we're using that to work with our at-risk populations at the secondary level. So we have a half-town FTE for alternative ed as an instructional assistant, working in that program. And then we have a third of a salary coming out for the in-school suspension aid at the middle school coming out of that salary. And there's also some professional development for mentor-mentee workshops, social-emotional learning presentations to students, work-based learning, PLC meetings. We have travel for our principals to attend the VASCD conference. And then there's some technology in there to make the instruction more interactive with students with that population. So that grant is for $39,429.77. Any questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I hate for you to walk away. I'm going to bring you right back up.
Got different papers.
Yeah. So next item on the agenda is the update to the operational budget, which we've all been waiting for, for FY 2024-2025 with Ms. Shannon Irvin.
Our budget's set at $33,367,9215. And due to changes from when the budget was presented to current day, we've been able to reduce the budget for $32,875,2453, which would leave us $1,9,941.53 to balance. So in your packet or in your online, you should see an attachment that has recommendations for reductions.
Similar to what we reviewed in the last one, so maybe see adjustments here and there.
Is that the third item, the possible?
Yes, I think.
That's what I thought.
And there was a board member that commented on the color schemes. I will just leave that person anonymous.
I mean, I think it should be green and gold, but.
Probably should be red.
If it was green and gold, it would be in a different light.
So the first third were automatics that didn't impact people or programs. They were just refined costs. And so the second sections was a suggestion that you could consider or a possible scenario to get you where you need to be at $31,771,951. And so those items, we looked at the things that we were adding that we didn't absolutely have to add, that we could.
Trying to consider the things that were required to offer, required to do, balanced with impacts on students and staff. All of these have an impact on students and staff. So where can we draw down the $1,941,000, but also have opportunities to not completely impact the future? The decisions that need to be made, I think we all have to understand that, you know, one of the things that we wanted to add was a new ag teacher. The irony of, we have an award-winning agriculture program and we have a lot of interest in it, but right now to add that position is hard to justify because we would have to take that amount of money somewhere else. And so since it was an addition, it was considered to be proposed. That's something that would be first, to not add the 3% salary. When we take a look at each and every one of our employees, as I indicated and discussed even Tuesday at the board meeting, each and every person that we have is valuable. And it requires that we are really supporting everyone, unfortunately, with the current budget. We began 1.2 in the hole before we ever developed our budget. We aren't able to facilitate the use of the raises. And we're working in a bionium, and that makes it even more difficult. So the 3% raise, we did implement the 2% raise in January. I think that's important to remind. We were hoping to continue to move forward and be aligned with the county in terms of the proposed raises and giving them to their employees, but that is not something that we will be able to do with the allotments. So that was something that was, unfortunately, we had to put on there because it didn't directly impact some things that we needed to build on. On the next, there are two teaching positions. We did have a lot of conversation with leadership on this, also looking at student-teacher ratios and the impact on certain content areas and where could we make some movement. And so that was something that we felt like we could do and do so in an appropriate manner. We had a vacancy at the middle school for an assistant principal. We did go through interviews, but anticipated there could be some potential issues with this. So that was something we identified might have to be. Even though we just added another assistant principal back to the elementary levels, this is something that we felt like we didn't want to have to take anymore out of the classroom and this would be, in that particular area, this would be the best place to go. Salaries continue to be paid with ESAR, being able to use that and redirect that money to be able to address that. One NCHS position, but we're still continuing to work through that. And then other items, professional conferences and travel. Important, that's skill building, that's resource building. But in the greater scheme of things, we do have three custodial positions posted down there. But you know, each person is important. And when you take that away, then there are certain aspects of the buildings that aren't getting addressed. So there is some flexibility within that. Maybe it's two custodians. But you know, that gives us some flexibility. But that middle bar, I felt responsible for trying to explain to you why those were put as prioritized suggestions. I think it's important to note, none of these are great. None of these are where we feel like might be a position. But the same thing I've said over and over again, us not being able to give the raises is not us devaluing our staff. Like, we value our staff a great deal. It's something that we're going to have to try to find other ways. It's something that we're gonna have to try to find other ways to demonstrate that. But for this right now, we aren't able to do that for all of our staff.
So, the other things that were identified are things that we don't absolutely have to have or have to do. Not to say that they're not integral to a student's education, like activity buses. How many kids would not be able to participate if we didn't run activity buses?
And they also help our remediation programs, so that students staying after for remediation.
All right, the athletic trainer and sports medicine. I mean, if we have a student that's injured, every minute counts. So, to cut that would be potentially catastrophic. So, none of those on the list, especially under that bar, are good options, though.
And driver's ed a lot of times is something that's easy to dismiss, but then we think about where we live and where and who we serve, is that's an access point for a lot of our kids. Access to an education, it's access to a job, it's access to life or medical resources. Like, it gives them an option to be able to do things. And so, that's not ideal for our community.
ERIC's not even an option because we use those people to come back in to fill the spots that we've had to cut on previous budget cuts, so.
Correct.
And the best part about ERIC is they know the school.
That's right.
It's not training and bringing the ball.
In a level of expertise.
Yeah.
Preschool, that's not, I mean, that's not a viable option if we didn't want to do that.
That hurts kids. The development of preschools and getting them familiar with their exposure to learning.
And the driver's ed is not a big line item in the overall scope of things, but I think that is probably the single biggest limiting factor to kids in this county. If they get out of school, high school, and they don't have a driver's license to be able to get to another community or within this one to go work.
So, could you, the preschool thing, could we do a half a year of that? Is that an option?
So, when you get into the preschool, there are certain things that you have to follow. I would say that who we serve in those preschool classes are at-risk students, the students who need that support the most. And so, that's tough when you cut that like half-days or half-a-time. I think.
Transportation would be difficult.
Transportation, then you see a cost go up there.
Go up there.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Parents then trying to figure out halfway what to do.
I mean.
I think it'll benefit, I'm sorry, but benefit long run in having that.
I understand that, but, you know, anything that we cut is gonna affect kids and parents and anything that is on this list. So, I was just asking the question to see if there was an option.
If it's on there, it is an option. It's just.
My question is.
Tough option to do.
The highlighted ones, I'm sorry, sister plan.
Yeah, I was just wondering if we could, you know, I know years ago it was just a half-day program, but I didn't think it through about getting the people.
Childcare, transportation, all of that, yeah.
Yeah, and then you would have to have a longer half-the-school program. If you did a half-a-day, they're still there all day waiting up if you couldn't do the transportation. So, I didn't think it through.
No, no, I appreciate the question because that's what we're trying to do, is talk about it.
We need them all, and I mean, I think we need them all. We've all talked about this underneath this board. That's one of the things this board is in agreement with. I think for me, the killers with three percent salary increase, the drop, I mean, you know, half, we're in, and Chaney, we talked about this yesterday, what's the consumer price index?
Three point three.
Three point three. This wouldn't even cover what the inflation standards are, the cost of living increases are at this point. And we don't have, we don't have control over it. We're relying on somebody else to tell us, okay, you can reward your people now. Well, the reality is three percent doesn't even begin to cover what they're worth, what their value to our community and our community outcomes are.
That three point three is also very misleading because about twenty years ago, they made a decision to pull food out of that. So, it doesn't even complete food. Or fuel.
You know, we sit here and we talk about not giving raises here, we gotta cut. Anything we cut, I just said this, it's gonna affect education of somebody's child, it's gonna affect some parent, some household member, anything we do. We were put in this position by other people, another board. So, you know, we can't argue every nut and bolt of this cut. So, we're gonna just have to just say, we're gonna have to make, just make a hard line and just do it.
So, that is my question, is the, are the middle section the section that you guys would prefer? You're guys, you're suggesting that. I added it up in the part on the bottom, doesn't even equal the million dollars. You know, it's only eight-hundred-and-seven thousand dollars, so we would have to do some of the tan and some of the white.
Right.
To make up that amount, I mean, if we were gonna just like strip. So, I'm asking you what your priority is, and you think that it's better to go with the middle section.
So, a great deal of time has been spent trying to think through this and months have been spent. And a great deal of emotion because when I see that, I see people. And I see a face, and I know where they are, and I know who they are. And I think that's the toughest part of all of this. And so, I'll take this, that yes, when we take a look at, even with the professional conferences and flipping that up all the way to the tan, those are things that we can take away and we'll have to fill within. But when we take a look at a lot of these others, it makes it super difficult. So, yes, I would say that where you see the tan would be a prior, more of a prioritize, maybe not necessarily in that order, but that is a more of a prioritized area that we feel like, you know, if we took the three percent increase and even dropped it to a one and a half, that's three-hundred-and-some-thousand dollars. So, on the lower half, what are we taking out? So, then you start cutting into ERIC or, you know, just big chunks, or you start trying to add up a whole bunch that has a greater impact. And that's the tough part, is this is the slice of pie that we were given. So, we have to figure out how do we make it feed everybody.
Answer Margaret's. No, I was just gonna ask Margaret's point. This third tier, are those in order based on your thinking?
No.
Okay. So, this third tier is just.
Just items that could be considered.
Yeah, things that we don't have to have, but we offer because we believe it's important.
And there are lots of blanks there in case you had some other thoughts that you wanted to add to the list.
Is there any way we could make more money that would be, you know?
Maybe solar.
So, I think, yeah, I mean, looking at those, I think the thing to keep in mind is the sustainability of it. These are recurring costs. And that's the same thing that the board of supervisors has to look into, is we are a recurring cost to them and to everything. So, when we take a look at how do we get donations or how do we do fundraising and how do we, those are, you can't look at that as a sustainable thing. It's like, you know, you're taught, don't look at, don't count on your bonus as your salary because you just don't know. On the same thing when you take, but I think, as we've discussed in previous meetings, is we're gonna have to look beyond. If, if, if this is what our revenue stream is gonna look like, then we're gonna have to think beyond because, again, I am not a proponent of taking away from people. I am a proponent of we have to continue to build and give, so that means we're gonna have to perhaps go outside. So, that's something that we're trying to look into to see what does that look like, but also the sustainability of that.
Right, right. Well, I mean, like, when I first was on the school board, and you'll remember this, the PTAs used to pay for the activity buses. It wasn't a board-supported expense.
I think that was for clubs and after-school activities that were not VHSL activities, those kinds of things.
Well, still, it was at least partially paid for through fundraising.
So, the three percent salary increase, that's on the biennium, so that's gonna buy us twice.
More than likely.
Unless there's an adjustment.
And I, right, and I'm sure that.
And we have advocated it a great deal.
I'm sure you have.
I have reached out to our representatives multiple times and, you know, they, many of them have tried, and this is just where we are. And maybe that changes, and that's sort of my hopes of being a part of this, is to learn a little bit more about what they're looking at and to advocate on those decisions, you know. Historically, hold harmless has been a part of this, that buys us time to strategize about how to deal with that increase. As I stated at the board of supervisors, we're sixteenth in the state in terms of our LCI. So, that's, you know.
We pay more for schools than Nelson County does.
So, and I brought this recorded so that people at home can understand what that means. Can you explain what sixteenth on the LCI index means? It's historically safe, so people understand that at home.
So, like of a hundred and, we say thirty-three divisions, but a hundred and thirty-two that are dependent on locality funding, our LCI is point six-six-four-five. And what that indicates is that formula is indicating that the schools, but the locality should be able to afford to pay for sixty-six point four-five percent of the funding. So, that suggests that thirty-four, thirty-four percent can come from the state. So, this is suggesting that Nelson County has the ability to pay for, to contribute sixty-six point five percent of the money to go to the schools. So, that means that I think the most is point eight, like where school localities are responsible for it, about point eight. And the lowest is, I think, point two or something like that. We have the second-largest increase, second to Charles City, so point oh-seven jump. So, it's not small. So, I think that it's a complicated formula. It's not a great formula in terms to use, you have real estate values, you have, I mean, income, you have enrollments, you have a lot of things that go into it that some of it we don't really control, that gets factored in, that whatever the state is looking at says that we should be able to pay this.
We meaning.
The county.
The county, not the school board, but the county board.
Well, because we're not a, we don't levy taxes and we don't collect taxes. So, the process of levying the taxes, setting tax rates or collecting them or distributing them, we're not, we don't do that.
So, that increase. In the thought of, we are one county and the school system is part of the county, so it should be really, it's all us, right?
Well, that's what I'm saying, like, it is focused on the school and funding schools because that's the formula design. But because we're not the tax agency, it reflects what the overall locality can.
Right.
So, can you dollarize that point oh-seven increase we had in LCI? What did that equate to in dollars lost from?
Revenue coming in from the state would be about.
We did that, one point one million.
One point one.
One point two million. So, we started this year walking into this budget with that much less money from the state with an expectation that the county could provide that funding to us.
Yeah, I think we got that notification, what, late November, December, that we were aware. Now, that we are aware that the LCI went up, then you have to, you're reliant on the governor and the general assembly budgets to come back and say, are we dedicating hold harmless funds? So, there's this other layer of it. It's one thing to have the LCI go up, but it's another then not have the hold hard, that's money that's being given through the state to kind of offset that increase. And so, that is a revenue stream, the LCI, and it dictates, so anything that the state says they'll give us, then we have to take that ratio and apply it to what they're saying to give it. And so, even if someone says, we're gonna give you two million, we have to take the LCI from that. And so, it's complicated. No one, no one said it's not complicated. It's, then you take the staffing formula, the SOQs. You hear us talk about the SOQs because that raise, the money you get from the state is only for SOQ positions. None of us can function on just SOQ positions. It is an archaic outdated staffing formula, not a good funding formula.
And it also gives the impression that the funding entities are doing, if they go over and above what they're required to do based on the SOQs, that they're doing, you know, being, well, we're giving you all this extra money, you know? And, and so, it kind of implies that they're doing way more than they could be doing or they should be doing because it's only, they're only required to do SOQ, you know, sixty-six percent of SOQ, which really means that thirty-four percent is, we're only getting from the state thirty-four percent of SOQs, right?
Well, what I think's important, though, is that the SOQs, and we talked about this today, the SOQ is the minimum education standard set forth by the state.
In like nineteen forty-two.
Right, whenever it was. And maybe there is one, but I know of no school system that funds solely on SOQ. That's like saying, please contractor, build my house for me and only follow the minimum building code.
From nineteen forty-two.
Yeah, right.
Not a house you're gonna want to live in.
Not a house you're gonna want to live in, that's exactly right. So, meanwhile, there are other localities, like Lynchburg, I'm listening to the radio this morning, Lynchburg just received a windfall. Seven million dollars increase funding from the state, okay? As opposed to what we've got going on. Henry County got, and I don't know their particular situation, but Southwest Virginia and Southern Virginia is usually in worse shape economically speaking. And they got enough more money from the state that they, their local match had to increase. They didn't have a choice. And we're not in that, but we're an agritourism-based economy that, we've got a lot of agriculture in this county. It's an agritourism-based economy where other people come here to visit and retirees come here to live and people that work usually travel out of the jurisdiction to work. And without the hold harmless money, you know, the bottom line is the state says, regardless of how we feel about the formula, the state says Nelson County Board of Supervisors, you have this much money or you should have this much money, and what you do with that money is up to you. And then, we're being told by the board of supervisors, well, we just don't have it, or we're deciding to allocate the money to other things that we feel are more important.
I like the way you put it, which is they decided not to invest in this.
Agreed, agreed.
And to Mrs. Powell's point, not only did we go in with that negative, but we were transparent and we told them. We had the, and you told them from day one, you did not hold it, you told them what, where the deficit was, and here we are still having to make these cuts. And so, our employees do not get raises, but their employees do. What raise percent did they get?
Three.
In the public hearing, they had three percent listed. Now, they have some constitutional positions where there's some things that.
And they have that history study that bed justice and stuff.
Yeah, but from my recollection of the public hearing, that's what they had listed.
I know, I know.
Now, how they end up doing that, I don't, I can't speak to that, just like they can't speak to how we end up doing it. And that's, that's what you guys, that's.
And I don't want the people at home or the people in the school system to think that what we're doing right now is easy because there are, how many items are on here? Oh, it's not numbers on here, so I don't know. It's a whole bunch of items on here that were on the board, and you all worked and worked and worked. And we're eliminating positions, but it's important to note we're not eliminating people. So, we're eliminating positions, which means we're not gonna be able to provide a job for someone, which is gonna impact whoever that someone was, but it'll also impact the kids as far as education, and we won't be able to provide opportunities. But, you know, the elephant in the room is the salaries. There's nothing that we can do without.
The elephant in the room is the salaries, but I'm also looking at teaching positions and administrator positions. And we talk about the people who are in front of the kids, which are our teachers. The administrators are the ones taking some things off people's plates as well and dealing with some other things. And so, like, those are people. And I think the salary raises is huge because it's, we're still woefully behind as a state to the national average. Everybody has a salary study, right? We have a J-LARX study that says that we are way behind. And so, we know that we're behind in the salaries, and by not doing this, we run the risk of staying behind and having to make up much more, which, when you have to make up much more later, it's harder, but we're also having these three positions not here. So, when we see the ebb and flow of enrollment, there's gonna come a time where some classes are gonna get a little bit bigger and we're gonna have to figure out what to do. But this is the best decision that we can make at the moment with the information that we have to do the best that we can without cutting people who are with us or taking money away from people who are with us. This ERIC, people, people, that's, that would be taking money away from some people. And, you know, it's just tough.
And people plan that as part of their financial plan when they retire. There's an expectation that it's gonna be there.
But even if you drop that, you don't even touch half of what that salary.
And that's why I said that about the salary because it's not the most important, it's just the biggest.
And I can't say it's not the most important. I don't want anybody to think like, oh, my God, it is, it's incredibly important. But I also look at the people, like, there's, there's high school, like, there's people involved.
But as was said in our joint meeting. But as was said in our joint meeting and several other times it's been said, we don't have a spending problem in our school system. The Board of Supervisors has a funding problem.
Well, and what's concerning is what are we doing, what's being done to change that trajectory?
Well, all we can do, and, and, and all we can do is to continue to reach out, continue to try to work with. And again, I'm trying to work with the chair or their board to try to set up a framework so we can have more joint meetings, so that we can continue to put our concerns in front of them and maybe, you know, encourage them to come up with ideas or, or we, we help them with ideas, I don't know, you know. But we've got to continue that, we've got to continue that in order to do this, because we can't, I'm, I'm more worried about next year now than I am this year. This year's set, we can't do anything about it, so we've got to do what we've got to do. Now, I'm, I'm focused on this, but I'm more focused on what's going to happen next year. You know, we've got to buy any of them, so again, the raises is going to hurt the second year also. You know, because the state, it's, it's like a, you know, you miss the boat, you miss the boat, unless they make a change. And you never know, they, they might, but there's no guarantee, and there doesn't seem to be any positive outlook for that to happen.
So, like I said, it's, it's not a good spot to be. Okay, um, we're put in this spot, so we've got to make some decisions, point blank. But when you start taking people out of classrooms, start shifting people around, they got to travel to other schools and, you know, they balance, you got, so you're asking somebody to take on more responsibility for less money. And nobody, I mean, if you're the boss, you're, you own your own business, you do these things, you don't start these businesses to lose money. You don't start these businesses not to be successful. So they're asking us to be unsuccessful in some points of educating these kids. You know, to my knowledge, nobody on their boards have any kids in that, in our school system. So it's not directly affecting their household. But we have that responsibility to take every household into consideration. So, but we don't generate revenue, we don't generate tax funds, we don't do any of that. But we are sitting here behind the eight ball to have to make these decisions that we have to make. It's not going to be popular. Everybody's going to look at us when they see us in public, it's, why did y'all cut this? Why did the school board do this? And, you know, my response is, we had to based on what the money we were given. So we can argue this all night long, but we're going to have to come up with something, okay? I mean, I'm not putting the, the pressure's on us.
Right, right.
So let's not, I mean, we got, we know we're affecting kids, we know we're affecting teachers, we know we're affecting everybody in this room and the people in the community, we know that. But we're going to have to do it.
So my, my, I mean, I'm a hundred percent on board with doing the TAM section. If that's where you guys feel that that's the best decision to make. And I hope you know that I alone, I don't know if everybody else would agree with me, if you, you know, could, you know, move like one custodian to give us the one AP or, you know, like kind of move the people, the positions around to, you know, if something happens that you're like, oh, we could do this, and, you know, that you, you know, I would like you to, you know, think of it that way, you know, just to be flexible. It's, you know, because I understand how important, like, that AP position, and I know how important it is. And also middle, you know, I mean, I, I know how important this all is, so I just say, yeah, we can do this, but, you know, you just, from my perspective, you have flexibility to, you know.
We continue to monitor, I mean, we continue to see what we have and where we are, but.
But anything that we cut, if we find money, we can bring back. I mean.
With sustainability.
Yes, yes. But we can't, we're not going to be able to make up the three percent when, not unless we get some windfall somewhere from the state saying like, oh, we screwed up, but whoever, how many times do they ever do that? But, um, you know, we're, at some point, we're, we're going to try to help by not being able to do this raise, I mean, because that's what we do on this board. So nothing, I mean, if we get a grant, there's stuff we can factor back in.
So, questions? The classified position that's listed below the middle section, do we know what that is?
It was a placeholder in, um, it was a placeholder for anticipation of perhaps retirements, resignations. It, it is not right now. That is not an option right now, without taking a job away from someone.
I understand, okay, all right, so.
And the same with, and the same with pre-K, we take pre-K away, that's taking a job away.
I understand, so a classified position would mean eliminating someone's job?
Yes, that was put in there in a, in a, at a time where there was maybe a perhaps anticipation.
All right, and how about employee furloughs? Would, that's written in there for a day, that's giving people a day off, so you're cutting, you're cutting a day.
A day out of contract.
Yes, you're cutting pay, you're taking pay away from someone.
That's like direct.
Yeah, it wouldn't make any sense to do that and then turn around to do, you'd have to do six days of that in order to get to the three percent raise, and it's just one hand.
And that choice would be taking away from someone else to give, and again, then you're just, it's, you're biding your time with the person you took it from.
Oh, sure.
You know.
No, I'm just, I'm asking so I'll know, I just want to make sure I'm informed.
One other little tidbit which might become interesting to people is that the average, uh, you know, one of the big things that goes into LCI's property values, and the average sale price of homes in Nelson for the last couple of years has been about four hundred thousand dollars. That's the average, and I've heard it actually, that's excluding Wintergreen. So somebody can afford a four hundred thousand dollar house. One point, one cent on the property tax is.
Twenty-one thousand dollars.
All right.
Three hundred thousand.
That's forty dollars a year on a four hundred thousand.
On a four hundred, yeah, it was ten, it was ten per hundred thousand.
It ends up being three hundred thousand dollars to the county's bottom line, but it's forty extra dollars per year.
To an individual.
To an individual, property owner have a four hundred thousand dollar house. So something, hmm, just thinking about that.
I mean, I thought there was some question at some point too of unrealized revenue from the taxes.
The T and T taxes.
Well, yeah, because you have to know how many, how many transient occupancy establishments you have if you would be able to tax them off.
So I'm just going to say, it sounds like there could have been an opportunity to take care of this from a county level. There's a choice not to.
There's always a choice.
A choice not to.
We're having to make choices now, they made choices then.
On, in the Board of Supervisors meeting on Tuesday, Ernie Reed did put forth a proposal or an amendment to the, um, to the budget, uh, motion to.
Three hundred fifty.
Take a hundred, three hundred fifty, um, uh, from the two kinds of the, whatever it is.
Recurring.
Recurring, sorry, I go to these meetings all the time, I can't retain any of that. So they have, okay, I think between the two funds, it's a million and a half, and he suggested taking three hundred fifty like equally from both of them to give us enough to at least do the raises.
What's our total employee count at this point?
Died.
Two eighty full-time.
And, but all that would, would benefit from the three percent.
Yeah, probably close to three fifty, somewhere that, because it depends on.
And I think we're talking, we're talking policy, we're talking frustrations between, we're, we're talking all that, but at the end of the day, that three percent is an impact on three hundred and fifty families. Three hundred and fifty families that depending on where you sit within that pay range or pay scale is the difference in potentially some groceries some week, potentially electric, I mean, you know, no one is making money and becoming wealthy off education. So when you look at the three hundred and fifty families that are impacted by not seeing a three percent raise, five hundred and thirty thousand dollars in the grand scheme of that budget is nothing to them. To air people, it's everything.
But it's an investment, and that's, that's the difference between looking at it as an investment and looking at it as an expense.
I think that's what the problem is. What's, there's nothing more important investing in than children. There's nothing more important.
So our job.
And the, and the people who work with children.
Of course, of course, because the, the children won't, won't have anybody to work with. It wasn't for the administrators and teachers. But the bottom line is everyone is going to be affected by these cuts at some point in time. And to think that people don't understand the investment that is needed to get to where we are. You know, the other thing I'm sitting here thinking about is the great work that you have done with this one Nelson. So we are not one. If we have a county that's getting raises and we have our school system that cannot, we're not one.
Well, we have to argue on that, but is it Georgia's pool?
It is, it, but, you know, and I think we've talked about this, um, you have your all-inners and you have your well-seers. And so we have all-inners with that mentality.
And it's buying in.
And it's getting the buy-in, um, of, of understanding what we do. And we're in an environment just nationally and locally that, you know, it's not cool to be in public education or it's not, that's, you know, and, and, and just kind of chipping away at that. And that's why we, we put a lot of effort into highlighting the great things that we do and our kids and our people and our families. And I think, you know, that's the other piece of this, is the, the, it's everybody who's involved in this and that was how that one Nelson was born from it. And to, to kind of extend that, we were having a conversation earlier, well, you can't teach them if they're not there. You know, our bus drivers, you can't teach them if they're hungry. And so that's, you have your cafeteria, um, you don't feel safe if it's not clean or custo, you know, like, so it all just builds on top of that, no one person is, is more important, we just have different, you know, we have the same goal, we have different roles. And I think that's the important part, is we all take on different responsibilities and different roles. But in the end, what do we want? We have, we want to give all, all of our students the opportunity to be their best and to be as successful as they can be. And we're not in the business of picking one kid over another. We're in the business of, you know, everybody coming to us, we do the best we can to set them up for success in whatever pathway they choose. So I think that we're going to continue with one Nelson. We're going to continue trying to model that and trying to promote that and do the things and make decisions as best we can, um, and, and continue to move forward, because August eighth, they're going to be here, and we're going to have to, we get to, honestly, we get to work with our kids. And that's the best part, is that we're going to get to do that starting over again. And we've got to put that on the shelf when we're in front of our kids. And we're going to, we're going to have to do the best that we can, and that's where we are. And, um, you know, as of June thirteenth, this is where we are. Maybe it'll change, but this, this is what we have to work with. And, um, you know, I know we're going to do the best that we can to make it work and, and, and build from there. We're trending in the right direction, so we just got to keep that momentum going in the right direction.
And let me say this, um, we recognize more educational achievements academically than we did, you know, through sports, through anything else. So the teachers are, you know, doing an amazing job with these kids. I mean, we had, we've got kids going, traveling all over the state, out to other, other states to represent Nelson County, and that is far more reaching than people see with these club members and, and people like that. And, you know, it's not all agriculture, it's not, I mean, there's some educational, you know, base programs that's in our school that these kids are excelling at. And that, and that's because of the teachers, the central office, the opportunities that they have been given by this educational system. You know, we all, I mean, everybody loves to have the state-winning basketball, baseball, track, all those sports. You know, they, that's, those are the things people look at. But we, educational-wise, put kids out there on national level, and nobody seems to ever recognize that except for at these meetings or when they need us to fund, you know, fund a field trip to somewhere. But, you know, I just want to thank our staff from the top to the bottom, because we put, our kids are excellent in education. You know, they are doing their thing. And we, and like you said, on August eighth, they're coming back in the building, and the teachers are going to do their thing, central office is going to do their thing, and we're going to continue to fight for them to be able to have what they need, whether we have to go back in December and ask for more money because we're out of money. I don't care if we have to, that's what we'll do.
That's right.
I don't see a capital improvement budget to approve tonight, that means we don't have one?
The county has not indicated that they have considered it, that I'm aware of.
What? I think, so our, our renovation projects and things like that have been accounted for with the loans and everything.
The big project.
But the normal capital improvement stuff, like buying buses and buying cars and vans, you think like that.
The most recent Board of Supervisors meeting is level funding from last year and it was an additional six hundred and ten thousand dollars. So there's considerations. I will make sure I circle back with Ms. McGary to have that conversation. I appreciate, um, her willingness to meet consistently. There's in a week that goes by that we don't have a conversation of some sort. So I will circle back with her to make sure that, like, we still have, um, we still have these other things going on that, in, in a division like we have, um, you know, how fast time goes by, that, um, you know, brand-new buildings, it's twenty-five years ago. That, you know, it is about twenty, thirty years ago, so.
Also, I would like to stay, say, you know, just being at those meetings, the board meetings and stuff like that, I want to appreciate Candy, Ms. McGary's.
And her staff.
And her staff, that's probably. For their, for their efforts, you know, to try to make, you know, what we're asking for look less.
We're not giving the funding that we, what we need, not just what we want, but what we need, but the relationship is certainly better overall than it has been in the past. There's no doubt about that, and we need to keep trying to build on that. Well, regardless, with everybody, I mean, we've had, we've had, they're too far apart, but we've had some joint meetings and they've been well-received and those kind of things that we shouldn't overlook that. We just need to keep building on it.
That's right.
On that relationship. But we're also going to be going, I think this is year seven, without the county putting any capital money in for school buses. So we had two from SFR funds and we got two on a federal grant that are larger. And that's four buses in seven years that we will evolve. We're getting further and further and further behind.
You know, it's interesting, the concerning thing would be, and, and, you know, we're talking about air snapshot and air moment right now, but man, if we can't as a county take care of what we've already got right here, how in the world do we plan to do all of this other infrastructure and development as a county and be able to take care of that?
Great question.
I mean, I was always taught you kind of take care of what you got before you do something else, as much as we want something else.
Right. All right, do we have any other discussion on the budget? Does, um, does anybody want to make changes to, um, the suggestions that have been made by staff?
When we, when we approve what we're going to have to approve this, I just want to say it's under duress and it is absolutely no reflection of how important we feel the people that are employees of Nelson County Public Schools are.
And I don't know who's going to make the motion, but I strongly believe that the motion should include the elimination of these, how many items that is, individually.
I can handle that.
Okay, so.
I don't know, you'll help me. I'll try.
And yet, just those items don't account for it all.
The items, if you took the items that are included in that gold section, they did bring you down to the bottom number that we need to get to.
Right, so here, here. If you go right at the top there, you can see that it's not a limit.
Yep. That, and that's what allows us to like, I'm going to take this out, put this here, it just doesn't matter for you.
And I'm okay if you want to add under duress that we have to add.
The, um, original amount we had in for professional conferences and travel was fifty thousand. We didn't need all of that, so. And we didn't need all of that, so that's why it's broken down, 31,000 suggested in the 18,000.
Is there a way, and I know that's a small part of this, but is there a way to do, if we're not traveling, can we do a hybrid version of some of that training through virtual conferencing that might provide the content but with a cost savings?
I think when those things are offered, we try to, an example would be, we took some administrators to VASCD this year. And I would, I don't know, Kevin, you went, right? And I think when we look at our climate surveys, that was something that was brought, like, we need this. This is something that's very valuable. And the face-to-face aspect is important. Now, there are some times the hybrid works and it works fine. And we do take advantage, I mean, incredible enough, we take a great amount of advantage of webinars and Zoom meetings and conferences with people. But some of this you just can't. And some of it is required things that you got to get, you know, these VLA things.
So the travel that is part of grant funding would not be touched. We have about $100,000 in our overall budget for travel. So a lot of it is going to remain, this probably would primarily be the mileage reimbursement to staff driving their personal cars.
Probably like fund extra monetarily for this year. You know, like if we had grants or had some fundraising going on or something like that, I mean, it'd be pretty interesting. Do a GoFundMe so that our assistant chief superintendent can get mileage. But we'll see.
Okay, any other comments?
Yes, sir.
If not, then we'll move on to the next item.
Which is good.
The next item is Pathways to Success with Dr. Van Deven.
All right. Well, then, I will highlight the great things that we are doing and what our money is going to, just tertiary. This is kind of the icing on the cake on some of it. I was trying to think of the right metaphor that, you know, our students and our teachers are the eggs that go into it. But I'm not going to get into all that because I'm sure I'll screw that up. So in terms of administration, Ms. Irvin has been working steadfastly on the budget and all things, particularly with the federal and state programs. But this may be the first time you guys get to hear this. VASBOs is the Virginia Association of School Board, or, yeah, School Board, School Business Officers. So finance directors, things of that nature. And they have a yearly conference, which they held in May, in which they also acknowledged the cardinal winner. And this is an individual who rises above all else in terms of professionalism, leadership and innovation. So our very own Shannon Irvin is this. So a lot of great things, we're going to send that, we just got the press release. And so we're going to send that out and try to promote that as much as possible in terms of the years of service that she's given. But, you know, I had a wonderful opportunity to be able to sit there and be able to watch the interactions that everyone else had with Shannon and the level of respect and admiration that they have for her. And she is truly one of their leaders. And so that was a lot of fun for me to watch and see those interactions. Also, like she acknowledged, working on the grant reimbursements and working through SPED and excess cost reports. Participated greatly in the admin retreats. So last year at this time, I also talked about the top five accomplishments. And so particularly for the administration, top five accomplishments, successful in securing additional funds for the division, successful monitoring of all federal programs and grants, which is no small feat, completion of a roofing project at the high school, RFPs generating cost savings to the division. So she is one of our individuals who are always actively looking for grants, but also sending out RFPs and being very mindful of what is selected to save us money. So in that effort, we negotiated broadband contract and included firewall bid that ended up saving us $30,000. Also navigating through a budget season, which has been one of the most difficult budgets in many years, if not all three years here. Instruction, summer learning, we talked a little bit about that, has gotten kicked in with a theme of future-focused. So preparing our students for their various futures, a lot of activity going on. Also continued professional learning on a volunteer basis. We had a great number of our staff participate in curriculum development and content development. So I really appreciate that and I think we've gotten a lot of great feedback from that. Also the development in the, hopefully, of the approval of the Division Literacy Plan and all the different professional learning that will go hand-in-hand with that. Also part of building the admin retreat and also providing several sessions on it. Top accomplishments for instruction, successful implementation of current elementary requirements of the Virginia Literacy Act, implementation of the All-In Virginia Plan that was rolled out in late September with an initial implementation date of October. But we postponed that beginning because we wanted to make sure that we were developing a plan that we could fully commit to and put into place in a way that wasn't going to overly tax everyone involved, although it did add more to what we were doing. We had four federal audits for title grants, that's one, two, three and four, along with, we had SPED, we'll talk about a little bit later, professional development plan that was written and fully implemented with a focus on math, English, science and the five Cs, along with other professional development opportunities. And also the implementation of family engagement events that were planned for the fall and the spring. In terms of data and CTE, we see the CTE grant from the DOE for the new electrical courses. Obviously, I would imagine I would have added this to the presentation, is winning of the award for the Agriculture Department. CTE department met federal benchmarks 15 out of 15 categories, which was up from last year. Got a clean spring test administration, meeting the increased rigors and magnitude of enrolling. So we have more and more programs that require rostering, which is migrating ours, from our student information systems and being able to have the access that, you know, you just log in. It doesn't just magically happen when you buy an instructional program that you can just automatically log in. Someone's got to enter in all that data and migrate it in to be able to do that. So did that in ever-increasing environment where we have more and more of that and we have clean and state federal reports. Human resources, this time of year, it's focusing on filling vacancies and working with individuals to continue to promote our team. So we sent letters and contracts out at the end of May. We were thoughtful when we did that and indicated that we were kind of transparent, saying this right now is representing without a raise because we didn't want anybody to think that something was going to happen and we weren't able to deliver on that. Also continuing to recruit our next greatest, high-quality teachers and all staff to come in and join our team. So also in HR, created spotlight showcases. So as we were bringing in teachers and other staff members, is highlighting that and spotlighting that. So everybody knows coming in, hey, this person's joining your school and your team, welcome them. Because that's the greatest part about this is we consider ourselves a family and we want to bring people into that. Establish a system for check-in meetings with provisionally licensed teachers. These are individuals who are not fully licensed yet, but working on that in many forms or fashion. So they need a little bit more support and being able to work with them so they can stay on track of like, what do we need? By what time do we need this? And we streamlined the evaluation process. We surveyed our administrators and said, how can we make this better? How can we make this easier for you? So there was a lot of effort into streamlining that process. Successfully filled mid-year vacancies. We had maybe 10 vacancies before the start of the January of 2024. So we were able to successfully fill those. Developed new system for tracking student discipline. We have an SDC or Student Discipline Committee. So being able to hold those meetings and track them to make sure that our students are staying aligned with where they need to be and also the support that they need. People personnel, attended the VCA's Virginia Council of Administrators and Special Education Conference. High school special education teachers worked eligibility to read 100% compliance for all of their timelines, which is a big deal. When you look at the greater scheme of things, there's a lot going on and having to track. We have kids coming and going into our system constantly. So, you know, I appreciate the efforts of Ms. Roydinger and her department to be able to assist the teachers in staying on track. Working to finalize a comprehensive special education audit, also planning for extended school year for some of our students. Ms. Roydinger was integral in being able to plan and implement our administrative retreat. So I appreciate the efforts and support of that. And also secured the Special Education Advisory Committee representative for each of our schools, so that's important. Check on all accomplishments again, 100% compliance with eligibility timelines, increased students and family engagements and did so through activities like the Tournament of Champions and Family Fun Fitness Nights, which was a great opportunity for our families to come out in adaptive environment where their students are able to participate in this. Provided professional development for the department based on self-identified needs, partnering and working with outside agencies to be able to do that. Utilized assistive technology consultations more effectively this school year. Increased behavioral and mental health supports in the division through adding second behavioral specialists, school psychologists for providing counseling services. Elementary counselors were trained and sources of strength, which is promoting social, emotional learning and character building. Technology continues to roll with trying to find creative ways to support our staff through copiers and printers and sending out RFPs. They, he, Mike and his group, Mr. Cargill and his group, have spent a lot of time streaming. So we have an extra emphasis on family and community engagement. And a part of that is not everybody can come to the event. So we'll bring it to you, all you have to do is click on this link. So there's a great amount of effort. You see the pictures here just from graduation alone, from the various viewpoint angles, getting people in to be able to follow that. We had an American Sign Language interpreter. I mean, it was a lot, we had a Spanish interpreter. So there was a lot of effort being put in to be able to deliver to our families, whether they are here or abroad. Also working on preparing our technology art phone books for summer learning, FFA competitions, all the students that they need throughout the summer and getting ready for next year. Top five accomplishments, participated in numerous projects all throughout the year and looking to make improvements that took place to continue to push us forward. Institute in fourth and fifth grade 3D Tinkercad STEM opportunities, provided cybersecurity. You all have really enjoyed that process, but it's necessary. It's a necessary thing to go through because cybersecurity breaches are only going to continue to increase as we move forward. So that is no small feat to take on in an entire division. Also tripled the number of live streams, we talked about providing those opportunities, tripled our live stream throughout this last school year. Sustained teamwork, flexibility, trust and department employee dependability. Maintenance, maintenance has been super busy in the springtime because they were huge in getting ready for graduation. But also prepping the grounds, Barbizon is an organization, a company that we're using to install the lights in the auditorium. So they've got it going, I checked that out today, installing the LED lights in the rafters, but also aisle lights. So they're working hard at that, getting the floors done, prepping for the school year. Hot water tank is scheduled to be replaced, as we spoke about earlier. Maintenance had to draft help from transportation department, unload truckload of copy paper. I was there when this was actually being delivered. And so it takes everyone to be able to get these things done. And also monitoring and helping out with the FFA Harvest Project that's taking place right now. For accomplishments for maintenance, successful replacement of the middle and the high school roof. That was a project that, you know, at least we don't have to do that for another 20, 30 years, thankfully. Replacement of the Ty River Water Line after summer learning. Some of us may have forgotten, 10 days before the end of the last school year, the water main broke. So we had to do some temporary fixes to then be able to fix it completely for the start of this new school year. They developed a plan and met tight timeline requirements for all these projects that we're doing, whether it was the roof or the high school renovation project, all of it was on a very tight timeline. So how do we get these things planned out? How do we make sure that we can do so appropriately? And so Mr. Campbell and his group was huge in being able to get that done. This doesn't seem like much, but the successful division-wide fire marshal inspection, teachers hate this. They hate it. And, you know, inevitably you get the fire marshal that this is the most important thing, and it is. But we had a clean inspection and they did a great job. And so we're just thankful for the overall cooperation to be able to have a very successful inspection. And then the transition from outside to inside for the high school graduation. Transportation, our book bus, it had seen better days. And so now we have a book box. So we're going to work on trying to spiff that up a little bit to make it a lot of fun. I think we see some, a lot more opportunities with this that we can use in terms of accessibility. Individuals maybe with wheelchairs or not as mobile. So I think this has some great options for us. Also, so fun for me, at the end of the school year, I got to stand in the middle of the buses as they were leaving. Luckily, no one hit me. But the excitement of the bus drivers about the last day of school and their role in making sure that we deliver our students home safely, that was a lot of fun for me to be able to witness because of the pure joy that they had me because it was the last time they were taking the kids home, but I think they really truly enjoy it. Mr. Ashley and his group put on kind of an end-of-the-year, kind of fair, if you will, for a lot of the bus drivers. And so that's just a lot of great participation in doing that with the cookout to celebrate the end of the year. Special thanks to Jeannie Drumheller, Donald Bell, Jackie Johnson and Tracy Bryant for driving the shuttles at graduation, as you see there. That was a very late night for them. It started early, they got them in there, and then they had to take them back. And so I appreciate that. And also attended and participated in the admin retreat. So highlights for transportation, received and deployed our two new electric buses, inclusive installing the charging stations. Began training our drivers to become CPR and first aid certified, which is critical in this day and age with a lot of the health issues that we're starting to see more and more of, whether adult or children. To be able to be prepared to deal with those situations is huge. Completed full year of running our third-party testing program with DMV. We're taking care of things in-house as opposed to having to go out and do that. Successful online bus registrations, that's huge for our transportation department. In fact, we posted that today. Start registering your transportation needs so we can start planning for that. Overall improvements to our administrative duties and tasks at the transportation department. Food or school nutrition, ended up clean up at the school site. We had a really successful audit go through, although I think I've said this before, sometimes it's, it sounds bad, but, you know, there's usually a finding or something that takes place. And how serious our groups take that. And I'm looking at it like, we're okay, we'll be fine. And they take that very, very seriously because they take their job seriously. And I just am so appreciative of that level of commitment and dedication to our kids and our staff and our schools. Summer food service, mandatory trainings taking place. We're also taking dairy bids, believe we had one come back successful. I never in my wildest dreams thought it would be that hard to find suppliers for milk, but it is. We, our summer feeding plan is underway. We have, as stated earlier, some ongoing issues with the Rockfish refrigerator. And our meal serves for May, which is short. We have student breakfast for $10,819, student lunches for $17,206, and our after-school meals $145. Top accomplishments for school nutrition, we survived the federal procurement review and federal administrative review. We continue to feed our students despite of short staffing issues and limited abilities of staff that actually came to work. And so sometimes everybody's piecing it together and doing what they can. It was nothing, we have cabinet meetings every Monday morning and every once in a while, like Chrissy's like, I have to go fill in. And that's more important, it's more important to go fill in on-site than to do that. So we understand that and appreciate that dedication. Continue to increase participation at each site in our breakfast, in our lunch and meal plans and after-school. We continue to grow the CACFP programs, supper programs, and then increased amount of scratch and speed scratch cooking utilizing locally grown products. So there is a deliberate and targeted effort to try to use local products, but also to do scratch and speed scratch as much as we can. But when you're having staffing shortages, doing the scratch and things of that nature can be difficult, so I appreciate that. Now for school accomplishments, I appreciate your patience, but this is my time to be able to share all the great things. If we're going to talk about our budget, let's show what we're doing with it. Strong preliminary data for SOL scores. We don't have official data in, but some scores that we're seeing coming in. And particularly at Rockfish, there was an increased level of behaviors in terms of sometimes severity, but more in frequency. So being able to juggle those obstacles and also still feeling strong SOL scores is great. And we see the preliminary of the SOL scores, like the predecessor of the PALS data. So our younger ages, we're starting to see the impact of our interventions and the success of our interventions at these younger ages, which bodes well as we move forward. So 78% of our first through third grade students who are on reading or above reading level. So that sets the stage of success as we move forward. Reduced the chronic absenteeism rate for this school year. Preliminary data suggests that they are getting closer to pre-pandemic levels, which is huge. There's been a great amount of effort in doing that, that doesn't just happen. Increased focus on school community engagements is one of the ways of doing that. Celebrated diversity, when you take a look at Rockfish, they wanted to be able to celebrate the diverse populations that are there. They did so through different demonstrations, displays, presentations for families throughout the school year. And last but not least, develop squads to support staff, school-wide decision-making and alignment of continuous improvement plan. So being able to provide those opportunities to be effective in that decision-making. Ty River provided increased community and family events. I think Ms. Calfman said that at the end of the year, they had 123 family and community events. The expectation is one. The expectation is one a month, so they blew that expectation far out of the water. Increased instructional assistance, collaboration with both general and special education teachers. And this was successful with the feedback that we got, that we want to expand, working with the group and the organization who worked with this group to expand it even division-wide of how do we identify the needs at each of the buildings and use this group to be able to come in and deliver the school-specific or the student-specific support that they need. They focused on targeted activities to support and improve student attendance, which they did see a drastic decline in chronic absenteeism. Supported the participation in squads and created strategic work through that. And increased opportunities for student participation. When students feel like there's something for them at that school, they're more likely to attend and they're more likely to have a sense of belonging. So the success rate goes up and starting to look at more clubs and activities, particularly looking at the fifth grade. So we appreciate those efforts. Data shows marked improvement of pure pass rates and also combined rates. So we're starting to trend in right, strong directions. Reduced chronic absenteeism significantly from the previous year. Implemented new master schedules. So we went from an eight-period school day in 2223 to a six-period school day in 2324, which provided more targeted interventions in content areas, in particular core content areas with sped support during these things where we start, we're starting to see that pay off. Increased interest in after-school activities, whether it's athletics, clubs, fine arts, we saw an increase in participation. So those activity buses, that's where also that helps support that. Grew PBIS programs and incentive programs through VTSS while also still holding students accountable. I can tell you from my interviews with students and also staff, they looked forward to those incentives and were trying to make sure that they got it and were disappointed if they screwed up and didn't. And so that's what you're trying to do is like recognize what we did and move forward. And last but not least, the high school, expanded the use of Edgenuity. We talked about it's an online education platform approved by the VDOE. We've been using it in ASAP, in GPS, but expanded it into credit recovery and mid-semester transfers, which we're seeing a lot more and more on a four-by-four system when many other places are seven periods or hybrid block systems. Getting those mid-year transfers, we've got to find a way to catch those kids up because once they enroll in our school, they're on the clock for us. And we want to be able to help them be successful. At-risk, on-time graduates, identifying early on who is maybe credits behind and how do we support them? And then also working with our homebound students, how do we continue to provide a platform to deliver instruction to them when they are not in our building? Supported student success through outside-the-box approach when addressing unique challenges and situations. Also increased safety measures on walkabouts using a little bit of time, and it's funny, just a little bit of time to walk around and be able to, to be visible, be, be present, significantly impacted rates of discipline. And it's, when you have that visibility and the adults in the building being active, it really does create a greater sense of safety and the students recognized it. When I met with them, they're like, these teachers are out in the hallways a whole lot more than they used to, so I can't just be wandering around. Yeah, that's the point. I'm glad you were able to make that connection and it deterred you. Implemented the GRIT, which it was a, during the school day remediation intervention program, which we've had positive feedback from staff and students and parents on that, of not relying on after-school remediation, but trying to, to find that time during the day because it was most likely for the access of students to be able to get that. And then continued staff commitment to students provide support for all. So I appreciate you having the patience with me to get through that. Just wanted to show you some great pictures from community engagements events. Obviously, we had graduation, but a really successful, for a long run of our boys soccer team was undefeated for, up until the game they lost. And, but it was a good run, a lot of excitement, brought a lot of people out to our stands. So we appreciate that. Support from the Saunders Brothers during teacher appreciation, all of our staff, including the board, was able to go out and get a flower. The commitment of our bus drivers to help our community out to be able to attend graduation, be able to shuttle them in because we had such great attendance to that. We had fifth grade promotion ceremonies at both Rockfish and Thai River. That was so well-attended, that was great to see. And then also the eighth grade promotion and honors assembly that had wonderful attendance and great excitement for that. Sun Meals, where we're providing meals for our community throughout the summer, has started and begun. We had a visit from delegate Lauffer to come by and visit our, we were able to show her some classes at the high school and then also meet Ms. Mayo, who's Teacher of the Year for this year, and Ms. Grooms will be the Teacher of the Year for next year. They also dropped off some honor roll certificates for some of our students and I appreciate, she did have a high compliment for us in that school buildings and the students and the classes that they saw, because I'm in a lot of schools and this is a great place. And so it's always great when you have people who are exposed to a lot of other places and are able to identify that we're in a good, we're in a good place. We had senior walks at each of our middle, our middle school and each of our elementary schools where our seniors got to go back and visit their, their elementary schools. Not just the students who have a good time with that, but the staff. Appreciate Taylor Ashley and his group, you know, year after year, putting together the 2024 sign. It's amazing. When we put that on Facebook, the, the, the interactions that that garners is unbelievable. It just goes through the roof. I love it. We had an end-of-the-year get-together just to show our appreciation for our staff. 160, 170 people attended. It was a lot of fun. It was just good to be able to see everybody just relaxed. It was, it was strategic. It was Tuesday workday, last day to see the teachers was on Wednesday, and I knew if we put anything on Wednesday, we'd never see them. But I appreciate the attendance to that and they seemed to have a lot of fun. And it's just our way, no one going into a tough budget season. We may not be able to, to do some things for you, but we can try to give you a good time and, and give you some good food. And we appreciate the barrel house for supporting us in that. They did a great job. And it was packed. It was great to see. And the weather was very cooperative. And last but not least, we have Stars and Spurs coming up, where we'll have a lot of our students participating, whether it's showing off artwork or in barrel racing, but also Ms. Knight working with the, some of the farm equipment, the sort of farm equipment and things like that. So there'll be a lot of great opportunities for our community, for us to get into our community and participate in that. And last but not least, graduation, it was a great ceremony, just be able to see all of our kids. I, I never hide this, that is my favorite all-time event of all the things that take place because every person from, you know, from kindergarten, pre-K, if you went to pre-K, had something to do with that and it was a journey. And maybe didn't start out great for some kids, but it ended well. Maybe started out great and not so much at the end. Sometimes it's not the kids always walking across the stage, sometimes they're being pushed and pulled. But they're getting across the stage and I appreciate the efforts of, of Mr. Walker and his high school staff, but also all the staff that came before that worked with these students. And it was a great deal. So thank you so much for allowing me the time to drag about our students, staff and schools and to be able to demonstrate what our money does get towards.
Thank you. Any questions or comments about the pathways to success?
I wish we would move that up in the whole thing, you know? In the present, in the agenda yet.
Oh, in the order?
Because, well, yeah, because I feel like where it's sitting, maybe we lose people. And I feel like that's the, that's the, where the Roman meets the road and, and that's the, the song we want to be singing, you know, all the time. And so I just feel like it's, before the people leave this room and before they, and we could probably ask Mike if he knows when the drop-off happens online, you know, it means just to, because that's the meat in our sandwich or the hot dog in our roll.
Don't let her keep going. Stop, stop. George, you're in charge.
So let's move on to items for action. And we've got about 400 items for action.
Hundred and one.
Not really 400. Okay. First item is approval of English textbook adoption. Unless there's discussion, I'll need a motion to approve.
I move to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next item is approval of the division literacy plan. Any questions or comments about that before we move to approve?
I would like to say that it is super exciting that we are so ahead of the curve. Yes. You know what I mean? All the other schools.
Well, everybody's now brought up to speed. We've just been doing this ahead of time.
Right.
Yes.
Well, that's good.
And that is not, that is not easy.
Right.
Work. And to take the initiative to do an internal audit or an audit on what we're doing there, that's, you, that's vulnerable and that's wrong. And, and just being confident and willing enough to do that and then let's adjust and see where we need, because ultimately, we just want to be better for our kids. And so I really appreciate the work of everybody who did that, Ms. Douglas leading the way on that, but a lot of people. You know, I, I know Heather went to several of the VLA trainings, Jennifer Campbell, Susan Cargill, but I mean, a whole lot of people were involved in the literacy plan and selecting the textbook. And I just appreciate that work because it's not easy. But I think taking in consideration our needs and then also moving forward with the needs, not just right now, but having an eye on the future.
Well, that hard work will pay off.
It already is.
Already is.
It already is. So I appreciate that, yeah.
I move that we approve the division literacy plan.
I'll second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Item C, approval of the policy BCF and policy DGD, which is a, remove.
I move that we approve policy BCF and remove policy DGD.
I'll second. Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Approval of second reading of the student wellness policy JHCF. Motion to approve.
I move that we approve the student wellness policy JHCF.
I'll second.
Have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Item E, approval of VSBA policy services agreement for 2024, 2025 and VSBA membership dues for 2024 and 2025.
I move that we approve the policy services agreement and the membership dues for VSBA for 2425.
I'll second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. F, approval of federal grant applications for 2024 and 2025. That's the title one through four. I move to approve that.
Second.
A motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We haven't talked about this, but you all, has everybody looked at the religious exemption request?
Yes.
Okay. So without any discussion, I'll need a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the religious exemption request.
A second. Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approval of the NCHS renovation scope. So, let's open, let's open that up real quick.
That was hard to understand.
What's that?
I said it was hard to understand.
Okay. So we didn't have, we had this in information before, we didn't have it in information tonight. So let's take a minute and make sure we're all square on what we want to do with that.
I would like that.
The very last attachment is the recommendation. It looks like this.
Yep.
So this would be all of the outside work that they were considering when they were looking at the start of the project. It included redoing the bus loop in front of the high school, middle school and the road going up the front, the middle school parking lot, the, I guess the teacher parking lot.
High school.
At the high school. The drainage in front of the greenhouse and some ADA improvements to the track area back behind the school. Knowing that there is one pot of money and the more that you do outside is less that you can do inside, the recommendation that this point would be putting the primary attention to the bus loop and the road in front of the high school due to the fact that it's a tremendous amount of weight on those roads because the buses all drought traverse that consume. So that would be looking at basically taking the pavement out and redoing it. The middle school parking lot, they're only looking at re-milling, so not as extensive repair there. So not as big of a replacement, but probably cost-effective and we're looking at it.
And no drainage improvements in the middle school parking lot, right?
Correct.
Okay. I mean, that's, we're going to have to address that at some point.
So a part of the milling is replacing some, like a part of that where we could see a fluctuation of some cost is it's a mill and overlay, but also may, removal and replace a problem area. So if they need that.
Yeah, because we have one settling area in the parking lot that never makes it to the drainage.
It stays.
In that parking lot. So, and that, if we're going to have an extra cost, it's probably going to be in that spot.
Yes. And they've identified that area.
Sure. Okay. All right. And so, so this is the recommendation and it's all of the items listed in the white and the dark gray.
Correct.
We would not do the dark gray.
Not the dark.
We would not do the dark.
Just the top four items.
Okay, got it. Okay.
So option two of bus loop in front of school, option two of bus loop entrance road, option one of high school parking lot, and option one of middle school parking lot where this suggested. Now, if you so choose to change that, we would have to look at.
Sure.
How to adjust it accordingly.
Is there any, are there any questions or is there any discussion about these choices?
I think we're getting behind it. I'll make a motion to approve the Nelson County High School renovation scope as presented.
I'll second it.
Have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oh, let me get lost. There we go. Okay. Item I, approval of the SEAC committee members for the 2024, 2025 school year.
I move that we approve the 2024, 2025 members.
As presented.
And I second it with a, a vote of appreciation for their willingness to serve on this committee.
Absolutely. Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Approval of surplus items to be sold. I'll make a motion that we approve surplus items to be sold.
I'll second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item K, approval of student fees for 2024, 2025 school year. You've got a cheat sheet in front of you on paper to tell you what the fees are. One up.
I move that we approve the student fees for 2425 as recommended, as amended or as recommended.
That'll work.
Yeah.
Second.
A motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item L, adoption of the operational budget for fiscal year 2024, 2025.
I unfortunately must move that we reduce our requested budget of $33,36,792.15 to by $1,264,841.15 to $31,771,951, including the removal of the new ag teacher position, three percent salary increases, two middle school teaching positions, one assistant principal position, salaries that were to be paid by ESER, three funds for August and September, one Nelson County High School position, and there are a little bit more than $30,000 worth of professional conference attendance and travel. That was my motion.
Okay, I have a second. I'll second. Have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Not willingly. How many do we have? I don't think we have but a couple. You only get two, so what, three? No, only get two. Oh, you made a three.
We only need three.
Yeah. You got three?
We don't have three.
Okay.
Just two.
Who's the two?
Did you vote aye?
I voted aye.
I did too.
So, Nae?[1723.41] Nay?
We don't have a budget.
I know. I'm in.
Reluctantly.
Yes, very reluctantly. All right. So it's reluctantly unanimous. Yes. And the motion carries. Item M, approval of adding school board meeting in July. We need to discuss this for a second. Superintendent has asked for a meeting in July.
Can you back it up?
But, but not without good reason. And, and we're bringing this up because in years past, we've not typically had a July meeting. So we're going to have one.
So I will take responsibility for said suggestion. We have a lot that, a lot of times in the July comes down to the personnel action report. And any necessary adjustments that we may have to, to any kind of policies, code of conduct, you know, just making sure that we've had a conversation at Evan or Chief. Let's, let's really think through, do we need to make any adjustments? That takes a little bit of time, but I want to make sure that we would have built-in first read, second read type of thing. Things of that nature. Anything, any, anything suggested going through there that we might need to address getting ready for the school year?
And I would like to propose to you all that we have a meeting on the 18th of July because selfishly, I won't be here for the 11th. We have to stay.
Unavailable on the 18th.
You are, and I'm.
I'm unavailable.
You're unavailable.
I might be unavailable.
I'll be here.
I don't have a light.
We could also do the 25th. I mean, we have that open. It just, it's bumping up closer to the regular August meeting.
Won't be available at all that week.
Okay. So you're maybe on the 18th, but not on the 25th. You said the 11th. 11th is the, would be the regular scheduled time? I can't, and if you want to have it on 11th, that's fine. I just can't be.
So how many of us are available on the 11th?
I'm, I'm good.
Why would you have it without you?
I'll be back.
Okay.
And does that give time for these items to come up by the 11th?
That's a very good question.
Uh, I think so. Okay. Here's the thing. There may be something shortly there. You know, I say that and then of course something comes through. But typically, I think that does buy us time to be able to get some things done and do it in a manner that we want to make sure we do it right.
So just to double check, who's not going to be here on the 18th? You two.
I'm a possible.
No, I will, I will.
I'm a possible.
I don't believe that he's going on the 18th.
So if you're on the 18th, you could be there on the 18th, teacher?
Oh, yeah, I think yes. That's not me.
All right. So we could do three on the 18th or four on the 11th.
So you're 100% sure you'd be back and available on the 11th?
Yes, I will make it happen for my suggestion.
I hear you. I mean, I'm fine with either one. One of the 18th was a form of. We'll do that, man. And if we have to move it, then we, we can do that.
Okay, all right, okay.
Because you would probably still end up with.
We need to do that for action.
So we're, yes, we do. And so we're covered on advertisements. Let's put, the 11th is the date with the reserve date with the 18th in the motion. Yeah.
That's nine, but definitely not 11th.
If we don't, we're going to be all jacked up on our.
I move that we have our regularly scheduled school board meeting on July 11th within, but that we leave the 18th as a reserve date in case something happens.
Second.
A motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Now I move that the board go into session to discuss and consider the personnel report and other confidential personnel matters. We don't need it?
No, 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 we do.
Okay. 3711A1 for purposes of discussion or consideration of prospective candidates for employment, assignment appointment, commotion, celebration. Salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public company.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I said no.
I saw you starting to put stuff away.
I was trying to figure out if we needed it.
Oh, close? We got a pretty hefty D A R.
Well, I don't think we have to.
Yeah, we got some stuff to do. We weren't, we'll do that.
Um, I wanted, there was a couple of things I wanted to talk to you about. I don't know if I said this.